This meeting is called in order in accordance with the open public meetings law. In accordance with chapter 231 of the public laws of 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. This meeting of November 3rd, 2025 was published in the Courier-News and Star-Ledger and placed on the borough's website and bulletin board at Borough Hall. A copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Brian Gallagher.
Here.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Here.
Andrew Conti.
Here.
Glenn Deney.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Gina Stravic.
Here.
Roger Verne.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of October 20th? So moved. Second discussion, roll call. Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, item number five, departmental reports. In case anybody hasn't noticed, tomorrow is election day. Polls open at 6:00 a.m. and they close at 8:00 p.m. I wish all those that are engaged tomorrow a good luck. Only those that actually are serving understand what it is to kind of go through this. It's not an easy task, so anybody who puts their hand up and says, "I want to be a part of this," I give a lot of credit to. So, thank you for stepping up and being a part of the process. Committee reports, let's go with Mr. Conti.
Nothing to report this time.
Okay, Gina.
The rescue squad reports 142 calls for the month of October. And they are actively looking for new members, training some new members as we speak. And they also worked collaboratively with the fire department to have a tour of the SF building this past, yesterday, this past Sunday for a community to come out and see the trucks, touch a truck. And we had a nice, small group of folks come out. So, thank you to them. The Board of Health meets next week, so if anyone's interested, see the agenda on the Borough Council website for the Board of Health. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Glenn.
Great, thank you. Environmental Commission was able to present the rationale and details of the tree replacement and enhanced stormwater ordinances to the planning board on October 22nd. So, thanks go to Jeff and to Marie for that presentation. Check it out on video if you'd like to. And then also on Saturday, October 25th, a group of 12 volunteers was able to plant native perennials that were donated by the Native Plant Society of New Jersey, the Somerset Chapter, in two of the medians on Halsey Street. Thank you to John for organizing that one. And then also later, earlier that week, at the county commissioner meeting, Jeff Lamborn spoke out about the importance of a regional stormwater plan and cooperating with nearby municipalities. If you're interested, excuse me, in joining the Environmental Commission, we'll be meeting next Tuesday, the 11th, at 7:00 p.m. right here at the Civic Center. And then for fire, hopefully you all remember to set your clocks back an hour, which is also a good reminder to check your batteries in your smoke detectors and your carbon monoxide alarms. Make sure you change them or check them. And then also on December 6th, at around 6:00 p.m., the Holiday Lights Parade will be kicking off, so get ready for the holiday season.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Teresa.
Thank you. Very briefly, just very excited to announce that the Somerville Public Library will be having their grand reopening this Saturday, the 8th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. I'm going to be there. I hope to see lots of people there. There's going to be games and music and celebration, just that we have our space back and see what they've done to kind of fit everything onto one floor. And they're going to have some great new programming coming in, so watch out for that. That's it.
Great, thank you. Randy.
I have nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Okay, Roger.
Just want to say thank you to the houses that participated in the house decorating contest for the recreation department. We had some, three winners, the gold standard of scary on 20 Everett Drive, a doll lightful horror show on 7 Cayman Place, Pumpkin Spice, and a ghostly delight at 146 West Cliff Street. And then honorable mentions go out to 42 Ross and 87 Eastern State Parkway. There are pictures up on the borough's Facebook page, so you can go ahead and take a look at the official borough Facebook page for those houses. And all the winners will receive downtown Somerville gift cards. So again, thank you to everyone who participated. Just some reminders, the basketball league for grades 3 to 8 deadline is coming up, November 5th. And again, a beginner basketball clinic is going to be Friday nights in January and February for grades 1 and 2, and that signup is, the deadline for that is December 30th. And again, a reminder that the Turkey Trot is fast approaching. So again, that'll be on Thanksgiving morning. It's a really, really amazing community event. Lots of folks from not only Somerville but the surrounding area come participate. So even if you're not going to run, it's something if you want to bring the kids down on Thanksgiving morning and check it out, it is worth it. It's just a tremendous event that gets put on every year and it gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So any support that you can provide and come on out, we'd appreciate it. And that's all I have.
And you don't have to run, you can walk if you want.
That is absolutely true.
Just two quick items that I just want to make mention of. One is the scouting for food program. Many of you probably had white bags tied to your door handles over the weekend or had a flyer dropped off at your house. And the scouts of Somerville, both Boy Scout troops and our Cub Scout pack are going to be coming around this coming weekend, Saturday morning, to collect. So if you have food items, there's a whole list of items on that form. It's also out on social media. If you have items that you can donate, just have it out by 9:00 a.m. on your front stoop and the scouts will be by to collect it and get it into the hands of those that need it most. So, that, and then also got word yesterday that the Somerville High School marching band are the state champions. Once again, what I'd like to do, Kevin, and Kevin loves when I do this, I'd like to bring them in, the whole darned band. And, and let's give them a proclamation, because my understanding is not only did they win the state championships, over the course of this season, they've won a whole host of different championships. So if we can reach out to the school, get all of that background information, we'll craft up a proclamation and, and let's bring them all in. And maybe some of them can bring their instruments too.
Mayor, may I further suggest that we somehow include them, if they're not already included, in the Holiday Lights Parade?
Sure, we can, well, we can reach out to the fire department, see how, if and how they can, they can be included. Good. All right, next up, number seven is a proclamation dedicating November as Native American Heritage Month. And I'm going to step down here for this. Come on in here. Over here, you don't have to go over there, you come on over here. So, so we have with us tonight Harold Willard. Harold, I've known Harold probably 25 years now or so.
Close.
Yeah, pretty close. So, is this on? This is on, right? You can hear me? Okay. Harold is a Cherokee Indian, and I think there's, and a resident of Somerville, obviously. And I think there's no better person to present this proclamation to than yourself. So I'd like to read this. Whereas, the borough of Somerville recognizes that Native Americans were the first inhabitants of the land that now constitute the United States, and their rich histories, diverse cultures, and enduring contributions continue to shape our communities today. And whereas November is recognized nationally as Native American Heritage Month, a time to honor the traditions, languages, and stories of indigenous peoples, and to acknowledge their important role in the past, present, and future of our nation. And whereas the borough of Somerville acknowledges that the lands we live on were once home to the Lenape people, whose stewardship of the land continues to inspire efforts toward environmental sustainability and community respect. And whereas the borough celebrates the resilience, creativity, and leadership of Native Americans, and seeks to promote greater understanding and appreciation for the contributions they have made and continue to make to all aspects of American life. And whereas it is fitting and proper that the borough of Somerville joins in this national observance to celebrate and recognize the many achievements and cultural heritage of Native Americans. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Brian Gallagher, Mayor of the borough of Somerville, on behalf of the Borough Council, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month in the borough of Somerville, and encourage all residents to learn about and honor the history, culture, and contributions of Native Americans. Thank you, sir. I knew you were going to say a few words.
De Sadoa Harold Willard, Da Bado, Jale Ghee, Ani Oquia. What I said to, what I said was, they know me as Harold Willard. And that I want to thank you for presenting this proclamation to me as representing the indigenous peoples of this state and of this nation. And on behalf of my people, the Cherokee people, and the indigenous people of New Jersey, I want to present this gift to you. Let me put this over here for a second. How to explain this?
Yes.
This is all handmade. This is deer skin, this is pouches deer skin here. And this, this beaded, this braided part is buffalo. And you can see the wolf on here, I'm Wolf Clan. And in Cherokee, we call ourselves Waiya, Ani Waiya. So this is Wolf Clan, and these are the seven clans of my people here representing. And on the back of this is the lightning bolts. When we say our prayers, God sends these lightning bolts to us. And some, you know, people run from them and everything, but to us, they, the grandfathers, and God sends his messages to us through these lightning bolts. In this pouch, there's tobacco, which is very sacred to us, because tobacco is originally originated in the Americas, and we've always used it to pray with in all our ceremonies and all our treaties and everything. So I want to give this pouch to you with this back tobacco in it, representing the chief of Somerville. In my language, there's a chief, and the council, and the town of Somerville, and which is our tribe here. And that loving, a loving caring for you, Mayor Gallagher, and the people of Somerville, on behalf of us indigenous people of the state of New Jersey and the Cherokee Nation, here, this I present to you.
Thank you. Beautiful, absolutely beautiful. Thank you. And thank you for coming, and thank you for being you.
Thank you.
This means a lot, and I greatly appreciate it on behalf of the council. Goes right up in my office. Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, item number eight is budget introduction Downtown Somerville Alliance. Dana.
This is the adoption, I believe, right? Yeah, the adoption, it's incorrect.
Oh, okay, all right.
There was a fold on everybody's, okay, so you're.
Yep, yeah, just hit. Thank you.
So, thank you. You know, the Downtown Somerville Alliance went back and had discussions on things that we could change in our budget to address minor sidewalk repairs. So we're proposing to council a relocating of our contents of our storage garage to an unused borough property, perhaps a former police headquarters for 2026. If the borough can agree to a dollar a year lease arrangement for 2026, that would save the DSA approximately $5,000 annually, and we would allocate these savings along with an additional $5,000 directly to a newly established DSA infrastructure repair fund. Right now, we also, you know, have a multi-year funding strategy that we've proposed. 2026, we maintain our contractually obligated contributions to the St. Patrick's Day Parade and tour of Somerville, a total of $8,000. But for 2027, we could, with obviously subject to board approval, reprogram those as additional contributions to the infrastructure fund. And so that would be an annual contribution of $23,000 starting in 2027. We also respectfully request that the borough consider a five-to-one match on DSA infrastructure repair fund contributions to enable the borough to perform larger and more comprehensive repairs over a shorter period of time. And that would potentially allow for a fund of about $50,000 to really tackle the minor repairs. And just a reminder that, that we do budget over $200,000 and include cleaning and maintenance, seasonal landscaping, and decorations to maintain the downtown area. And another $205,000 of grant money has been put into infrastructure-related improvements from our budget. There's also several properties expected to be developed over the next several years that will include new sidewalk construction if approved. That's including the Gateway East Project, the Granits Project, and Edgewood Properties at 164, 166 West Main Street. And these developments will be required to improve portions of the sidewalk infrastructure as part of their project compliance. And we urge the planning board and the, or zoning board to ensure that all projects that come before them either invest in new sidewalks or repair of the existing sidewalks. We also request that the tree fund monies received from developers inside the special improvement district be used for additional plantings, tree maintenance, tree root care, sidewalk leveling, and infrastructure improvements within CID boundaries. Currently, thousands of dollars are being generated from CID development projects and being redirected outside of the district to the tree fund. Those funds should be reallocated back into the district, you know, to take care of, you know, these, the areas which is most impacted by this development. We also believe that, that there could be, you know, exploring of additionary or following supplementary funding sources, perhaps a commercial sidewalk assessment program, establishing a program similar to the existing residential sidewalk assessment program that would create equitable cost sharing for sidewalk maintenance. A Main Street road closure fee, creating a non-tax revenue stream through fees for non-DSA events requiring Main Street closures with the proceeds dedicated exclusively to infrastructure repairs. And of course, we will continue to explore grant opportunities to do infrastructure repairs. We currently have four that involve infrastructure from sidewalk to alleyways. We also know that there were some questions about our events, and I put into your folders an explanation, an overview of why, I guess, our approach to budgeting for events. And each, each event that we plan is designed with a specific goal in mind, whether it's driving foot traffic or promoting local businesses or enhancing Somerville's downtown brand. And budgets vary for each event because of logistical needs, the audience potential for revenue generation, or sponsorship support. And we carefully balanced our investment in those experiences to draw visitors with opportunities to recoup those costs, either through ticketing, vendor fees, or sponsorships. So as an example, Puppy Palooza is almost exclusively paid for through a sponsorship with the Patriots, which we wouldn't have gotten with, you know, in any other event. It was especially, I guess, coordinated because of Sparky, their mascot. And so we'll actually also get vendor fees potentially from that event. Small Business Saturday, in contrast, requires, you know, it's much smaller, less infrastructure-heavy items. We don't have to hire a stage, I mean, rent a stage. We don't have to rent AV equipment. It's very, very specifically made smaller to not distract people from what they're coming down to do, which is shop in our small businesses. Some events are ticketed, such as Chocolate Walk, Girls Night Out. Other have vendor tabling fees, like International Street Fest, which we recoup almost half. And if you look at your budget, the top part of the budget that speaks to revenue has in there revenue that we get from different events. And then the events, the costs themselves is in a second part under expenditures. So it's a little deceiving just to look at the expense of an event without taking into account the other things that, a revenue that may be drawn from, you know, a particular of it. And so our event calendar is designed to balance high investment that draws significant regional visitors. I believe we shared with you our data from our Placer account, which shows the number of visitors that we draw during events. Each dollar is evaluated for its return in visibility, attendance, and downtown economic activity. And the promotions committee meets monthly to debrief on every single event and make recommendations for modifications and improvements, or improvements based upon real data. And the overall strategy is to ensure that Somerville remains a vibrant, attractive destination year-round. So I respectfully, I guess, submit the new budget proposal to the council.
Okay, questions?
So are we just approving the budget or all these suggested items for development of new revenue streams and everything like that?
I think it's really, I, my impression is that this really is just the budget. It's the overall budget. And it's not like government where it's set in stone. Over the course of the year, they have the ability to shift their monies around as, as they see fit, or as the board sees fit.
So I'm just concerned, Brian, I mean, the suggestion is being made that the borough put in a five-to-one match. That's what I'm not prepared to agree to. I appreciate the effort in the DSA going back and finding $5,000 out of their, their budget towards sidewalk maintenance. I'm not sure you've got quotes on what maintenance is going to cost, because I really don't think that's anywhere near the need. And then we're basically donating the other 5,000. So with the request for a five-to-one match, and, and I think there's some valuable ideas in generation of new revenue streams and so on, and the, and the business owners taking some responsibility through a program, but I'm just, don't think I'm ready to commit to all of those new ideas, although I will accept the $5,000 addition in the budget, so.
And I, so I guess just a couple of comments. One, I like the idea of exploring the sidewalk assessment program and seeing if there's an ability there to have that public-private partnership. I think that's a good one. I also agree with the idea that revenues, tree revenue generated within the district should be put back into the district. And that may be one of the fall downs of what we have today, that there wasn't that reinvestment back in the district. The way I see it, I think, so you're looking at, was it 10 grand total?
There would be, yes, 10, provided that the, that we can move our garage.
Yeah, and I, I don't see that as a problem. What I would, what I would like to see, and I agree with Gina, we're agreeing more and more, is, this is, this to me is a first blush, that in ensuing years, there needs to be more of a commitment to that, that sidewalk repair. I mean, it's really, it's general maintenance. It's, it's no different than your home, it's no different than your business, and there needs to be that, that general maintenance, that general upkeep. Because we've seen what happens when you don't. It's what we have now, and, and we need to have that. So if what I'm hearing is that this is the first investment, and then in subsequent years, there will be larger investments, I can then get behind it. But I haven't heard that, so I would like to hear some discussion on that.
Well, as I said, we have in 2027, so this is the budget for 2026, in 2027, we can contribute another $8,000. That would up that contribution to almost $23,000. And then with new, I guess, properties that are coming online and increased assessment in, from those areas, or increased tax revenue, we, I can't make a commitment of the dollar amount yet, because I don't know what that tax, additional tax revenue would be coming in from these new properties. So, but yes, that, that is something that we are committed to taking a look at, yes.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you, and even at 23, I don't know if that's enough, because I, again, I, I'm not familiar with how much it would take to repair what we have on a consistent basis or to maintain what we have. The, you know, I, I know if you put in a paver sidewalk in front of your house, or a paver driveway, it's expensive. It's a lot of money, it takes a lot of labor. So, so the idea that, you know, we need to create a percentage out of the overall revenues coming in for maintenance, to me makes a lot of sense. You know, and I get the idea that, you know, 26s, we're already in, in the mix of it, but I think there's got to be a realization from the board that they need to buy in, that the borough, look, the borough and the board got together 10 years ago, and we fixed a whole lot of sidewalk. And I want to say we, we committed 50, and I think the DSA came up with 50 at that time. So you're talking, and that was, that was basically a one-shot deal to just go, so you're talking a lot of money. I understand that, you know, trying to build into that, but I'm not hearing it back that there's going to be that build, and it can't be over 10 years. It's got to be, you've got to take a percentage of it and dump it right back into maintenance. Because without solid maintenance, without sidewalks where, you know, people can reasonably navigate without having to hit potholes or, you know, bumps in the road. You know, it's, it's, it's created a problem, and it's, it's just being magnified now. So I think we have to get to a point where we need to invest more in that.
Well, as I said, the, the board and the executive committee is committed to making those investments, but this is what we can do in our 2026 budget.
Can I ask a question about what the cleaning and maintenance contract with ABS is? What is ABS, and what do they clean and maintain?
ABS is, stands for Affordable Building Solutions. We put out an RFP back in 2024. Actually, I believe it was 2023, it was a two, no, 2024, it was a two-year contract in which they, they clean, depending on the, the time of the year, during obviously our busier summer months. They have a three-member crew that comes out every single morning from 9:00 a.m. to noon time to clean Division Street and the overflow of garbage on Main Street. They clean up, you know, different types of areas. They were maintaining the weeds that were in those beds that were cordoned off for a while, where they were overgrown, like we had them addressing the weed situation. They also are the company that takes out our furniture on Division Street, puts the furniture back into our shed, you know, at the end of the season. So they do several, several different things over the course of the year for us.
Do they work on Sundays as well?
Only during the busiest time of the year. They don't work on Sundays during like this time of the year.
Oh, because I was downtown yesterday, and there was garbage just overflowing all over the ground. I, I know it's because of Halloween, but.
That was addressed though, first thing this morning.
Okay.
But we, but door from October, I believe it's October 1st to December 31st, they work Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Saturday. And we're looking with the infrastructure committee this week to decide whether or not those are the appropriate days of the week for them to be out there.
That include, that scope of work include removing graffiti and vandalism stickers, things like that, as well as, you know, gum and whatnot from the sidewalk? I mean, beautification in general, if we're paying somebody that much money a year? I mean, like that's, that's an employee or two, you know, potentially, as far as I see the dollar value there. And those employees, if they were ours, could be directed not just to do the cleaning, but to also do the sidewalk repairs. But instead, we're paying $120,000 to a company, and out of it, we're getting some garbage removal and some chair removal. So I, that's confusing. So that's confusing to me. The other thing that's confusing to me is that your dollar numbers on your sidewalk repair, I know you have $10,000 in here and you keep saying that's a contribution this year. Then you said next year, you could do another 8,000 and that would bring it to 23? I'm missing the 5,000.
We put another 5,000 in in the 2026 budget, just based on what we have right now. But if we get an additional.
This says $10,000, you said there's another 5,000, so this is $15,000?
In 2027.
2027, so we're talking about 2026 budget, though, okay.
Correct.
So on this one, you're doing $10,000 worth of minor repair. And I echo the points that were made prior to me by my colleagues and the mayor, that this doesn't seem like enough to do what we need to have done. And what more of what needs to be contributed to this? I mean, there are places where, I mean, I don't think, also, I just want to be clear about this, that we should be eliminating contributions to any other events by doing this. So I think you had mentioned something about the, was it the Memorial Day race? Or what were the two events you said you would eliminate contributions to in order to increase this fund?
In 2027, those are not DSA events. Those are external organizations that we make a community contribution. Tour of Somerville and the St. Patrick's Day Parade.
The DSA was asked to step in on both of those events to assist them financially because they were going through a financial issue at that time.
Are they still having a financial issue?
My understanding is that Tour of Somerville did very well. I'm not, I'm not familiar with St. Patrick's. But obviously, you know, they raise money from the public and if they don't have a good fundraising year. So we did, Dana was not here at the time when the Board committed to that. So when we had committed to that, we felt that we would give them three years to basically get on their feet, right? You know, I'm not sure we said it that way, but that was the commitment. And the idea of that was, yes, those funds were to disappear and to be reprogrammed into either new programs or other things. And in this case, the idea was to reprogram those monies into the areas that you requested. No, I'm sorry, the council requested. And as far as the safe and clean, what that is, we did do an analysis several years ago about actually bringing on staff to the DSA. But unfortunately, the cost of both healthcare and workers' comp claims, you know, everybody looks at their salary, they don't really look at the fact that it's really double that, if not, in some cases, two to three times that. It didn't make sense at that time for us to do that. This has been something we've been, we bit it out, so it does go to, it's a competitive environment. And it is, for the majority, it's supplemental cleaning services. So that the DSA, again, with the staff of three, they don't have any physical labor. So that provides their physical labor component. Because, again, if the municipality was to do some of that work, it's off-hours, it's on Saturdays and weekends, it would lend itself to overtime costs. And we had felt that this was the way we would go. And I think, you know, and again, it kind of, that program kind of predates Dana as well. But it's probably something we want to stick with, you know, to provide some of that supplemental work.
So to kind of just put my arms around this, the revenue generated, the Borough collects, we provide to the DSA, and the DSA manages that money on behalf of the property owners that are downtown. So, you know, what I'm trying to do is to look at this because we have, we have a governing body here who, you know, has to ensure that the monies are spent judiciously. They have a board that should be guiding and directing, and they have a constituency that should be guiding and directing how that money is spent. Based upon conversations that we've had, we have opinions of where that money should be spent. Ultimately, it's their board that has to decide whether this is the right way or not. Having said that, I still go back to the significant infrastructure issue. We all recognize there's a significant infrastructure issue. And I think the DSA board has to recognize that as well. I have no problem passing the budget with the caveat that the mayor and council are requesting that you go back and insert a significant amount of money for infrastructure. The Borough is willing to kick that in. We're willing to, as we go through our finance mechanisms, to invest in our sidewalks because it is infrastructure, it's about safety, it's about attracting people, it's about keeping people coming downtown. We can create all the events we want, but if we've got a lunar surface for a sidewalk, we got a problem. So I have no problem saying, okay, DSA, you know, the ballpark numbers you have are okay. However, as you go into 26, we need a big number for infrastructure. If we're, if this governing body is willing to give a big number for infrastructure, the DSA has to do the same thing. They have to carve it out, they've got to figure out where. Now, I know the next question is, you tell me what event you want canceled. That's not up to us. That's up to the Board to look at this critically and say, how can we shave off 1,000 here, 1,000 here, 1,000 here? And let's, instead of a five-to-one match, I'd love to see it a one-to-one match. That makes more sense. I don't know if, you know, if we can do that over a two-year plan, if we can go to a two-to-one match, year 26, and then a one-to-one 27, that to me makes sense. But there has to be that shared responsibility. There, we can't shift it from the property owners and the DSA back to the Borough to bail it out. I don't know that that's fiscally sound from the governing body's perspective. So, I mean, if everybody's in.
So Mayor, if I could just comment on that, and is, is, you know, one thing about the DSA budget, which is very different than the municipal budget, when it comes to revenue projections. The revenue projections of the municipal budget, it's very clear, you cannot anticipate more than you realized in the prior year. That's the law. It doesn't matter if we bring in millions and millions of dollars, actually, it doesn't matter. When the DSA struggles with that, because the DSA, the event revenue is always predicated on how people are buying tickets. So that is an area we did talk about, the Executive Board, that if we could, if we do better in some of the areas than we're projecting, which we hope we do, that it will lend itself to some more opportunity. But we won't know that until kind of the year trickles in and some of the events trickle in. But I think the Board is, would be committed to finding some additional money, provided the additional monies are findable, if you know what I mean? The revenues, the projections do better than.
That's a government term.
Yeah, yeah, the revenues do better than we're projecting in the DSA.
Well, I think the goal here is a two-to-one in 26 and a one-to-one in 27.
And I think what is important too is the tree fund, because the tree fund is critical because a lot of the sidewalks that we all complain about are related to forestry issue. And with the assistance of the Environmental Commission, I think the DSA and the Borough and the Environmental, we're gonna have to tackle each one of those individuals to figure out the best solution. But the tree fund, that's what it's there for. And I think that that's important to be able to tap into the tree fund, not necessarily for the sidewalk, but for the tree. And if we're able to do that, the DSA could navigate its way financially a little better.
So just realizing that when you do that, we're gonna have to allocate additional monies out of our municipal budget for the residential tree streets that we already do. And the other thing that needs to be done is the trees, no matter where, need to be planted properly. And a lot of the developers are going cheap and not putting in the appropriate soils and putting them into spec. And there's no oversight in that process. And I've called the question multiple times on these trees in two different areas of town with the developers and it has been a battle and hence the trees are dying or undersized or inappropriately planted. So it goes a little deeper than that. But certainly, this is a good step forward and I appreciate even a better response.
Councilwoman, I appreciate that. And I do think, as, I mean, as a municipality, we have to tackle the most pressing issue. The most pressing issue is the Main Street trees. And I think that's the issue. And so I think that, and I appreciate that. And as we go through our municipal budget with Roger and Gina, we'll have to talk about those additional funds.
All right. So is everybody okay with a two-to-one and then a one-to-one? Is that kind of the general direction, general consensus?
Sure.
Not forever, we're gonna.
As long as that's.
This is a two-year plan.
Well, let's get, yeah, it's a two-year plan and then we'll go from there.
As long as there's an increase next year.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
All right, just for transparency, I'll open up for public comment at this point. Just please state your name and address for the record and please address your comments to me.
Greg Storms.
You know the routine.
Know the routine, yes. I would just like to comment on the presentation, it was well done. However, we've been talking about these downtown sidewalks for 10 years, 15 years. And we're talking a drop in the bucket, 5,000, $10,000. It's almost, it's silly to even talk those numbers. We all know it's hundreds of thousands of dollars to replace these sidewalks. And I don't want to say, but we're kicking the can down the road another year, another two years. This needs to be addressed now, in my opinion, for the Main Street, for the store owners downtown. I would say, with all the events here, the most important thing to the business owners on Main Street is the sidewalks. The cleanliness of the sidewalks, the trees, and what's going on downtown. We've attempted to make it better by taking all the grates down. It's a step in the right direction, however, we all know there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I would suggest that putting more monies next year or doubling them to hundreds of thousands of dollars and maybe even floating a bond of some sort in order to pay for these sidewalks to get done urgently. I just think it's a critical area that the DSA, if they're going to be funding it, the Special Improvement District Tax, we all know, is generated from the property owners. Started, when was it started, Brian?
Ouch, 90.
89, 91?
No, 93, yeah, early 90s.
And it was called the Special Improvement District Tax. And it's morphed into the DSA. I support the DSA, I support the events. However, without a clean, safe Main Street, none of the events are gonna happen. So I would urge the DSA, I would urge the council that we really need to act on getting the sidewalks, a plan in place. We've been talking about it for years, sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, close the public comment session. Just to address that very briefly, so I think year one, if everybody's clear, the Borough's willing to put in 50, the DSA, we're requesting they put in 25. So we're looking at 75 to address those immediate concerns, those immediate trip hazards that are a problem. I do like the idea of looking at the potential for a bond ordinance coming out of the DSA with the debt to be paid off by the DSA budget. That's something I think we could address and we should address, that would have a significant long-term impact on it. That bond, I think I asked that question last time. It was a 30-year note that they had floated to do the sidewalk, to do the initial installation of the sidewalk. And that came due, that was done, I think, last year or the year before? I'm not quite sure. So, I mean, in here, what is the bond?
I mean, I will tell you, the DSA doesn't have the ability to bond. The municipality actually bonded last time. So unfortunately, between 30 years ago and now, there's a lot of laws that change. So we did meet with our attorneys that handle our liability coverage. So we have to be extremely careful of exercising control of properties that we don't own.
That's another layer of concern because, yeah, I get that, I do. But I think it's a discussion we have to have, and I think it's one we can have moving forward. But, so the idea is 75 for the initial blush to fix the imminent hazards that we know are out there. The following year, we're looking at 100 or some longer-term approach to fixing the sidewalks. Because I agree with you, Greg, that, you know, it's, not only do the store owners want it, more importantly, the consuming public want clean, safe sidewalks.
And that number could actually be larger, provided that we have, if we have to tap into the tree fund.
Yeah.
Right, so the number could be large. Sorry.
And if I may, you know, we're talking sidewalks, but also the trees. I think that we need to definitely make sure we have outside expert opinions on exactly what to do with them, because we've kind of circled around and around as how to fix this area. And the sidewalks are one thing, but then doing the right thing around where all the trees are is really important. And I think having, you know, an arborist or somebody else. The Environmental Commission had engaged at one point in doing a tree walk down there. I think getting some of those ideas might actually really help move this forward and make us use our money wisely for that, so.
So I did speak to Jeff Lamborn about this, because I assume Jeff's gonna take the lead. We do have a consultant, we're waiting for a grant to come in with the next three weeks. And then I'll be asking the governing body to bring on a consultant to assist us, and I'll work with Jeff on that.
Great, thank you.
Could you clarify, you received the grant or you're writing another grant?
No, the grant was submitted, we have not received it yet. It's six weeks before notification. We expect to get that. It's part of the Tree Inventory Grant. And when I say grant, it's strictly for a consultant come in and assist us.
That's for the whole town, the Tree Inventory.
That's correct. Yeah, so the Tree Inventory, which is the basic, we don't have one, right? So this, it would be the basic step in starting the process. And we would likely stay with the consultants to assist us on Main Street particularly.
So I do want to point out one thing before we close out this discussion on the budget and whatnot. I think one of the overarching messages that you should be picking up here is that the focus mainly solely on promotional events is not really the main focus of what we would expect from the Special Improvement District. It is a place, and placemaking is important. And part of that is making sure the place is somewhere that's attractive for people to go to. So it is, the physical aspect of it is just as important as the ethereal and cultural aspects of it. And I would hope that from this discussions you've heard over the last two meetings you've come to, and also going forward, that the direction of the DSA includes a bit more focus on the placemaking and the parts that make downtown somewhere where people physically want to occupy, as opposed to just somewhere to come spend money, right? We want people to be there and then to make the decision to spend their money there. So I'm hoping that that was one of the major things you pulled out of this discussion.
Yes, thank you. In my, just three months with the DSA, you know, I agree that placemaking is extremely important and that includes the infrastructure projects. We don't consider ourselves an event company by any stretch of the imagination. You know, these events that we do, and I've looked, spent an enormous amount of time looking for sponsorships for them. They are things that the business owners do want to see, as you pointed out. Nobody wants to take away any of these events. And, but we are very well aware. Every grant that we've applied for recently has been with that idea of placemaking in mind.
Okay, we have to pass a resolution?
Could I just say?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sure.
That's okay. And while I agree with everything that was set up here about maintenance and the trees, I do still, about the events, I do still feel that you could be a little bit more creative with the Small Business Saturday. And that the focus of the Small Business Saturday is bringing people to downtown, making sure there's a reason for them to be in town and not go to the mall, and to support the businesses. So I still don't understand why there are the gifty gift cards instead of the DSA buying gift cards from the merchants so that they get the money upfront. And I think that if you hired the trolley to go up and down the length of the Main Street, like we do with Girls Night Out, to make sure that it's not all centered on Division Street, that people are going to have transportation up and down all the way to Revive, all the way to Taco Walla, things like that. I just think that there are ways to encourage people to come to downtown. And just because Small Business Saturday is a well-known thing, people are struggling with money. People go to the big box stores because there's sales. The reason they come. The reason they come to Small Business Saturday is because there's something different about it. There's something that's drawing them in, it's going to hold them here. So I just want, I just need to put that out there, that that's how I feel. And I think that there should be more focus on, instead of businesses donating things to the baskets and buying gift cards from Yifty, you buy the things from the businesses and put them in the gift baskets. That's how it was done years ago, and it was amazing, because you see that money upfront. You don't have to wait for somebody to maybe spend a gift card, or donating something to go into a basket. Small businesses already lose money all over the place. We need to give them some money to help them through the holiday season, because this is going to be a really tough holiday season, because people are going without food now. Businesses are going to fail, so we need to help the businesses. That's all I had to say.
All right, thank you. So let's bring this to a close. I'll ask for a motion to support the DSA budget for 2026 with the caveat that we go on a two-to-one match. The borough will, will provide 50,000, the DSA will provide 25, so we can do infrastructure improvements in the downtown. Do we have a motion?
For the year 2026.
For 26, yeah.
That's the, yeah, that's the budget we're on, so moved.
Second.
I think we've had a whole lot of discussion on this, and let's, anybody has something that they really, really need to say? If not, I will ask for a roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Verne?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Take care. All right, item number nine, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Verne?
Yes.
Public session is now, public comment period is now open. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Verne?
Yes.
All right, item number 2776 is amending ordinance number 2757-250303, establishing a salary range for employee titles to be paid to certain officers and employees of the borough of Somerville. This is housekeeping, this allows us to establish the minimum and maximum amounts for various titles within the borough for employees. Public comment on 2776 is open. Hearing none, close public comment, and I will ask for a motion for introduction.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, thank you.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Verne?
Yes.
Sorry, I circuit, I short-circuited for a minute.
That's all right.
Okay.
Been there.
All right, 2777 is amending chapter 102, land use of the code of the borough of Somerville, Article 11, site plan review, 102-69, general requirement subsection J4 by adding subsection R. I'm going to ask Mr. Cole, our borough planner, to please step up and just give us a very brief overview on what this is and what it does.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the modification to the checklist requires that the council look at the redevelopment-
And what is the checklist?
The checklist is the land development checklist. Any applications for land development have to fill out 102-69, which is the checklist for the application to be deemed complete. This adds an item to that checklist that requires any development in the redevelopment areas that are substantial in nature to go in front of this governing body, for the governing body to make a determination whether designation of redevelopers warranted or not warranted. That's all this really does. It just clarifies upfront what the position of the applicant and the governing body is on whether this meets the threshold of whether it should be deemed to be required to be named redeveloper for the, whatever the proposed project is.
All right, public comment on 2777 is now open. Hearing none, I'll close public comment, and I'll ask for a motion for introduction.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner? Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Verne?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to jump out of order a little bit, since Mike is sitting there. And item number 2779 is amending chapter 102-94, Article 11, entitled zoning, creating subsection H, entitled zoning and affordable housing inclusionary development. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, that's the inclusionary zoning ordinance that was drafted in the fair share plan that went up to the state in the end of June. All this does is take the draft and it starts to adopt the ordinance, which is required by the statute, the fourth round, to be done by March of 2026. This just starts the process of adopting the outstanding ordinances that require for the fair share to be moving forward.
So we're doing it ahead of the March 2026 deadline?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Public comment on 2779. Hearing none, I'll close 2779, I'll ask for a motion for introduction.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Verne?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike. All right, item number 2778 is amending chapter 166, Schedule 3, entitled No Stopping or Standing on the west side of Grove Street at the intersection of East Summit Street. Teresa, do you want to give us an overview, because I know you've been working on this for a while?
Sure, so, I don't know, a couple of months ago, at least by now, maybe three months, residents from East Summit Street came to the Public Safety Committee meeting and asked us to look at the site triangle, was that what?
Yeah.
That's the word I'm looking for?
Yep.
Site triangle on the intersection of East Summit and Grove Street. Because there's a lot of trouble seeing around all the cars that are right up to the edge there to get onto Grove Street. It was very difficult and dangerous, so we did that. And we saw definitely there was a big problem there. And we asked the county engineer to take a look at it and give us, you know, a report and recommendations for extending the no parking, no stopping or standing zone at that intersection. It's a T-intersection. And the recommendation from the county engineer was 75 feet on each side. So that is going to take away some of the parking on Grove, but it is going to make it much safer for everyone, the, the residents to get onto Grove and the people driving on Grove. Hopefully, this will take away some of the risk of accidents, so that's it.
Okay, public comment on 2778 is now open. Hearing none, I'll close 2778 and ask for a motion for introduction.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was somebody going to say something?
You're good.
I apologize.
No worries.
Council-
His mind's on the election.
Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Verne?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance for public hearing and adoption. 2774 is amending chapter 150 of the Borough Code, Article 3, entitled Seasonal Sidewalk Cafe. What this does is it actually creates a little bit stricter enforcement of the outdoor cafes, including four-foot walk widths, as well as prescribed timelines and fines for not getting applications in, I shouldn't say fines, but enhanced fees for not getting applications in, on time. So I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Verne?
Yes.
Public hearing on 2774 is now open. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Verne?
Yes.
All right, motion for adoption on 2774.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Verne?
Yes.
Okay, consent resolutions, any to be pulled off for further discussion. All right. All right, so, 299 is authorizing the CFO to return the cash maintenance bond for the Davenport project block and lot, as noted, commonly known as 21 Davenport Street. 300, rescinding Somerville Borough Resolution 241104-329, and terminating local support for Kinnisava Cannabis LLC for a Class 5 retailer license at 960 Route 22 East. 301, authorizing the reserved parking on Grove Street for Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. 302 is awarding a non-fair and open professional parking consultant contract to THA Consulting. 303 is adopting a title of Director of Human Resources Payroll and Finance Clerk. 304 is authorizing an amendment to the contract for final design services for safe routes to school along Veterans Memorial Drive East Project with NV5 to increase the contract amount by $46,860.51 to a new contract amount of $296,119.67. 305 is adopting new local public contracts law thresholds in accordance with Local Finance Notice 2025-08. 306 is approving vaccination clinic to be held on April 26 in coordination with the DSA. 307 is advising municipal departments of property ownership transfer and maintenance obligations for 123 Davenport Street block and lot noted from Phillips to the state of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. 308 is adopting a title of a deputy treasurer. 309 is approving Somerville Fire Department application for Mark Lukac. 310 is authorizing change order number one to the contract with SNL Contractors LLC for the North Autton Avenue reconstruction and drainage improvement projects. 311 is authorizing change order number one and final payment amount of $7,383.84 for top-line construction for ReHill Avenue improvements. 312 is authorizing change order number one and closeout final payment of $2,801.83 for contract with AA Berms for Veterans Memorial Drive Plaza Contract, numbered as noted in the amount of $130,365. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Teresa Bonner?
Yes.
Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravic?
Yes.